All right, it's 3:01 PM. Notice this here by giving the above called meeting of the Economic Development Corporation Type B to consider and act upon any lawful subject which may come before said meeting, including, among others, the following items to be discussed and acted upon. Call to order and recording of the quorum. See that we have, all the members are present. Also, we have two new, I think, believe this is a first EDC meeting for both. For Mr. Jimmy Hernandez, who's also on the City Council, and for Abel Benya, who this is, I believe, your first meeting, right? Okay, so both replacing, may she rest in peace, Madeline and Christine Vina, who's a term that expired as well. So we do have a quorum. Is anyone signed up for public comment? We'll double check to see if anybody has signed up. And then we can move straight to that. No, nothing, okay. So we'll just move straight to presentations, Community Development Update by Nicholas Abarki.
Good afternoon, welcome new board members. It's nice to meet you. I'm Nick, work with the Community Development Department. Hopefully, everybody's had time to review the packet that I sent out, but I will kind of go over our project updates. I think it's been about two or three months since anything's been kind of given here. So our current projects in progress, we'll start with 7001 West IH 10. That is our Balcony Heights Business Park. They just finished up, all building finals completed within the past month, and certificate of occupancies are currently being issued for quite a few suites out there. Our new pre-admission testing suite over at Texan has been completed, passed final inspection, certificate of occupancy has been issued over there as well. A decent amount of new businesses in the past two months. We have Methodist Texan, as I mentioned, Demoman off of 1131 Babcock, Rodeo Bling at WODA Little Shops, Spirit Halloween, that is a seasonal there. Balcony Heights Business Park, that is the leasing suite there. Hospitality Design Group Architects, Castline Corporation, Coe U.S. Incorporated, and two additional ones that I neglected to include in that first packet there. Phoenix Performance and Rehab LLC over at 7001, and Sherpa Financial LLC by Mr. Hernandez over here, who has taken a lease over there. Would y'all like me to go through the vacant lots for commercial residential?
Let me recognize.
Yes.
Real quick, Nick.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick little suggestion, would it be okay if we, or if I was to request for the board, where you go down this list that you have these businesses, and if you could just put on the side of it, sales tax generating business?
Sure, sure.
Non-sales tax generating business.
Sounds good.
That way we can understand how many.
Absolutely.
Of what we're generating, balancing out of the businesses that are coming in.
Yes, sir, and I can touch on that really quickly. I know Rodeo Bling at the Water Shops does generate sales tax. Spirit Halloween generating sales tax. And those are the only two out of those that have been issued certificate of occupancies. Going forward, I will include whether they're generating, no, no.
Kind of gauge.
Absolutely, yes.
It's not too much trouble.
No.
And Nick, if you don't mind, because it has been a while, just brief recaps on all these vacant lots and buildings is just to make sure that we kind of know where they're at and because it looks like the pizza place looks like it's closed down and.
Yeah, so there's quite a few new properties that we've kind of included on this list. 4109 Fredericksburg Road, that is Sperry Yama's Pizza. Vacant, the owner did not notify us that they were going to shut down business. All we had was a sign to go off of 205 North Crossroads Boulevard. That is Crossroads Car Wash, that's been vacant for quite some time now. 110 North Crossroads Boulevard Charcoal Grill, again, I believe has been vacant for some time now. 6400 West IH 10, that is a business park. All suites are vacant. This used to be the Wrap Shop, and I believe there's about four or five suites that no tenants have really expressed interest in renting from. 599 Spencer Lane is at Northwest 10 Plaza. It is a suite, although it's issued its own address, but one suite for lease there. It is a business park that's split between San Antonio and Balcony Heights. 4545 Fredericksburg Road, that's the former lax. Some interest has been shown on that property with potential development, but that is currently empty. 4219 Fredericksburg Road, that is former Norma's. Property is listed by the owner, still zoned MXT. No interest has been shown, but they are going to start making more of a push to sell that property and display some signage there on property. 4522 Fredericksburg Road, this is the padside next to Denny's. To my understanding, there used to be a rental sign there or a lease for the padside. It has since been removed, but it is vacant currently. 3102 Hillcrest Drive, this is Magnolia Flats Apartments. This is listed by the owner, not publicly visible from Hillcrest Drive, but has been formally listed. 2810 Hillcrest, this is a commercial building. This is a property for lease. If y'all have kept track of recent meetings, they've gone through an SUP recently, and then gone through City Council and were denied their special use permit. So they're currently looking for someone else to take over the lease for that property. 6901 West IH 10, vacant lot, Zone 01, low-rise office. That is just a completely empty lot out there behind the motel on the other side of I-10. 4519 Fredericksburg Road, former Wendy's, they have places signed out there for lease. No interest has been, you know, given to our department. 4205 Fredericksburg Road, Iguanas, I believe this is relatively new. This has closed within the past few months. They were boarded up, we've removed the boarding, but they now have posted a for more information sign out there, so they are trying to generate a little more interest and filling that vacancy. And finally, on the commercial properties, 2932 Hillcrest, Anchor of Hope. No notice has been given to the Community Development Department, but there is a for lease or for sale sign posted on the side of the property that was just noticed recently here. Are there any questions on commercial properties before I continue?
No, that's, that's good, thank you.
Great. Residential properties, there's quite a few additions here as well. 620 Gentleman, vacant lot, zoned R5 Town Home Residence. The developer has shown interest, has come with a few different ideas to develop, but most recently has told us that he will develop townhomes and is close to putting in permits to begin that construction here. 221 Bobby's Lane, structure on the property has been demolished. Properties in the flood zone, this is not a new update, but has been on there for quite some time. 210 Concord, this is a property purchased by an owner, currently going through the Board of Adjustments for Variance. Currently, as our ordinances read, you need a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet to build a home on, and most of the empty lots within residential R1 zone properties don't meet that criteria, so they're trying to get a home built out there. 216 Bobby's Lane for Sale Sign Removed, to my understanding, somebody has purchased that property. 1139 Babcock, vacant property, zoned R1. 140 Glen Arm, home for sale, I believe that one's the one next to you, Mayor, has been shown as a home for sale for quite some time now. 137 Balcony Heights Road, vacant home. 235 Alkelton, vacant home. 102 Leisure Drive, vacant property. I believe that that one is above 10,000 square feet. 245 Bobby's Lane, this is a vacant property, less than 10,000 square feet. There has been interest on this property, but I advise them that you will have to go through Board of Adjustments, Variance. So that is something to consider for them, and they were kind of not open to the idea of going through that process to build a home and purchase that property. 329 Glen Arm Place, vacant property, zoned R1. Any questions that I can answer for residential vacant properties?
No, none for me, no one else, I don't think so.
Fantastic. Capital Improvement Projects, we just have our three, our Crestview Phase 2 project has been completed. Has, I believe, closed up within the past six weeks or so where we've gotten our final. It's just pending a few last minute documents that we need to send over to Bear County, but that project fully completed and signed off by our engineer. Crestview 3 in a survey phase, 15% of completion for the design that will, should start by end of this year, this calendar year, or go into early spring next year. Hillcrest Road Reconstruction, we're currently in design phase, 60% complete. SAWS does have the plan, the reviewing the infrastructure. Once we get done with the SAWS review and they have their sign up, we'll be nearing a 90% completion with the MPO. Any questions I can answer with capital improvement? Finally, miscellaneous projects, we have our EPA Brownfields Grant Assessment Grant. The site inventory has been completed by TerraCon, our third-party contractor here. They are doing internal reviews, they have submitted to the EPA. Once that is finished, they will be giving that information over to the city. And our residential rental property inspection program, no new updates on this. Code and Fire began their annual inspections over the summer for multifamily residences. Code is currently trying to do a somewhat overhaul of our program that we were a little more strict on our landlords here for our multifamily residences to keep them a little more accountable. Fires continue to do their inspections as they've been ongoing here throughout the year. Any questions that I can answer on any piece here?
Very good, thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
You know, something I'm noticing on the agenda, Sid, is that we had, I think, sometimes placed you under Presentations, but a lot of times you also present in Executive, and I think they've moved you to Executive. I don't know if it's, you know, your usual monthly update. It looks like it didn't make it into Presentations, it's actually in Executive, because sometimes that information is sensitive, and if you'd like to present in as a, as a presentation for, because I saw something come through on your. Would you prefer to present under Presentations or keep it in the Executive Session? Okay. All right, so now we move on to the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held August 14, 2025, and the monthly finance report. The minutes were what was handed out just right before we got started.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a couple of questions.
Yes.
Regarding the minutes. I just want to confirm, the insurance premium is projected to rise at WODA is from 241 or was it 240 to 609 annually? Approximately 4.3 million reduction in value? Was it 2.3? I mean, 241? Maybe Mr. Weiss can answer that, or? Do you remember, Mr. Weiss? The projected rise on the insurance premium, do we have the number right, 241? Right, and then it jumped to 609? Is that the correct figure? So those numbers are right. Okay, good. And then the interest rate, the number of the reset interest rate in 2026, increased the annual debt service by 700,000 at its present state? So is that a correct number then? That the interest rate reset in 2026 may increase annual debt service by 700,000? Is that an incorrect? Okay. Do we have clarification on that, Mr. Chairman? Just that I've picked up on.
Yeah, I think we, I'm trying to see where it falls under, and it was not, it was the, it was Saldana and Steiger. So I think it's, it, we're not, at this, at this point, that's what they presented, Mayor.
Okay.
So it's not, yeah.
Evaluation report.
Yeah, correct. So it's not saying that like, okay, this is in concrete or anything. It's just simply reporting those, those figures.
Evaluation figures. Okay, that's, thank you for the clarification. And then, the last but least, the City General Fund has been subsidized 1.1 million in interest payment to Taurus, our bank. We're at 1.1 on that right now, that we have owed to us roughly in our distributions. The City General Fund, Mr. Messick, does that sound about right?
Mayor, again, I believe that was what was presented to us, and I remember looking at it at the time, and that matches what I have.
Okay, that's another Steiger report, valuation. Okay, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions on either the finance report or the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we recognize, I move.
Yes.
That we approve unless there's any consenting items from the board, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held August 14, 2025, and B, the monthly finance report.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We call vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? In the opinion of the Chair, the motion passes. Discussion and possible action, proposal to consider, idea to revitalize WODA with a throwback strategy. Director Jacob.
Any luck with the, yeah, that's fine. Even have a slideshow. So I had some fun with this, and I think it's a fun idea, but I just wanted to state, I also think it's a very serious idea and strategy. I think we can all see that the mall aspect of the property could use some revitalization, and basically, my opinion is, instead of trying to modernize and update the mall, I think we should lean into what a lot of people would consider the heyday of malls and that type of facility. So the idea, by the way, I'm Jeremy Jacob, I own a business in Balcony Heights, Float Wellness Spa. I also own another company called Evolve, where we have a location across town, and we're franchising. So my perspective of how I view the property is a business opportunity. I know a lot of opinions here can sometimes be, you know, the asset that we have, but that asset, as we've been discussing, reduces in value when it's not performing. And so my perspective is, if the mall is not performing, how do we revitalize that asset and turn it into a performing asset? Next slide. So basically, the, the idea is to lean into the current look of pushing it further into an 80s and 90s vibe. Can you go full screen on that? Close enough. Yeah, I think this is just the PDF version, that's fine. So leaning into the 80s and 90s period. I went through the mall, and there's actually a lot of aspects about this with some of the new tenants. There's actually already an arcade and a roller rink. There's even a tenant in there that does photography. So I polled some people, and the ideas around what a mall experience was in the 80s and 90s, it wouldn't be that difficult to recreate that experience. And I don't think it would cost that much on the capital expenditure to revitalize the space. And I think if the city and the Economic Development Corporation could offer some incentives, we can bring in some smaller vendors that can help push this idea forward. You can go ahead and move forward. That era is having a moment right now, everything from Stranger Things to some of the physical media, everyone from Gen X, Millennials, Gen Z. You'll see them wearing band t-shirts from that era, all of that type of stuff. We haven't given a lot of the folks a reason to go into the mall recently. So this is a way to create an experience that will draw people into the space. Analog, last, I think, two years ago, vinyl outsold CDs, and of course, not digital media, but even cassette tapes are having a resurgence. So things like bringing in a record swap or having a vinyl store in the mall would, would go, would be a part of this concept. Creating a social venue, the events that we have in the mall currently are part of this experience, and I think it's just taking that one step further. And then, of course, leaning into the local identity, some of the Spurs Fiesta palettes, things like that, local music scene that we've experienced through the decades. Okay, you can keep going. So the vibe switch, a lot of that is just the way that we bring in things like neon, retro signage, those type of things, not a huge expenditure. Leaning into the acre experiences of the arcade, the roller rink, things like that that we have in there. And it's really just shifting the perspective or the aesthetic of those things. Curated retail, if we can provide some incentives for people to bring in a record shop. Sneakers are huge, comic book stores, these are things that you'll find throughout San Antonio. What we have an opportunity to do is create the space where all of that comes into one building, and I guarantee that people will drive from outside of San Antonio to come and experience this. There's nobody, nowhere else in Texas where you can experience a mall the way that we did in the 80s and 90s. So we can keep going, I don't want to get bogged down on too many of the details. Again, everything from Gen X to Millennials, Gen Z are looking for these experiences. I've even seen YouTube channels where people are visiting older malls and talking about that experience. We can keep going. So I talked about the arcade, roller rink, those are actually current tenants, we can just lean into that. There's a photographer in there right now that does sports photography. We could actually just kind of work with them to push that in another direction. Record store, pretty easy. I think that we also need to make use of the vacant spaces. When you see a vacant space in a mall, that automatically changes the feeling of that space. Whereas if we can open those spaces up and use them for art galleries, for experiences, things like that, it will elevate the, the feel of the, of the entire mall. So I think that to kind of slowly move into this, we can do test base, which is very similar to the, the strategy of having some of the smaller spaces on the second floor. Kind of lean into that a little bit. Even creating some, like one invoice ops bundle, where we can work with our partners to get Wi-Fi and those type of things, reducing some of the business costs so some of these smaller vendors can come into the space. A big part of this, I think, would be the programming calendar. Again, we've got partners we're working with for events, so working with them, but I think that we've talked about the staffing at the mall. I think we need somebody more full-time that's going to help push forward and market these events. We've got a perfect space, air-conditioned space, where we can have these record exchanges, vinyl and record exchanges, car meets, those type of things. So it's just really leaning into that strategy a little bit more, again, to give people a reason to come to the mall. Design and ambiance, y'all can use your imagination, there's a lot of different ways that we can do this, but I think working with local artists and creating photo installations would be a really easy way to, again, use some of those spaces and lean into that vibe. I think there's a little bit more we could do with the food court, working with some smaller, like, local chefs to create some experiences there. Everybody wants an Orange Julius back. So. And then, part of having a full-time person that is handling events, they can also be the marketing person, so they can manage a Instagram, TikTok, those type of things to promote these ideas, concepts, and features. Incentive package, there's two parts of it. I think the, the mall ownership, along with EDC, ways that we can incentivize the right people to come into the space, and then the city partners, what we can do to push that forward. Instead of, I have some concerns about, you know, I like that we've, we've brought some of these medical partners into the space. I don't know if that's a great long-term strategy, and it, it feels sometimes that we're begging people to come in that aren't really going to provide a lot of value to the experience. I think if we're a little bit more strategic about what we're trying to do, and we bring in the partners, like the record shops, the sneaker shops, and we say, these are the vendors that we want, I think it's easier to find them. We can create incentives to bring them in where we're not putting out a ton of TI. Some of the numbers that have been thrown around for, again, begging people to come into the space, and we're literally taking out loans in order to do that. I think we can open the spaces up and bring in some of these tenants without a lot of cash expenditure. This is, this is a little bit of a separate concept, but a way that I think we can also, we had somebody at the last meeting that asked, what else are we doing for the city outside of the, just the mall, because we tend to talk about that quite a bit. I think having a co-working space in the mall would be a great way to drive traffic in the slowest time periods. All we would have to do is basically provide Wi-Fi and some desks. And if you're a citizen of Balcony Heights, you would have free access. So this is a great way to, if you bring people into the mall, they're going to spend money in the mall. So folks out that are not citizens can have a low monthly fee, but there are co-working spaces all over San Antonio. We're already air conditioning these spaces, so I think it's a great opportunity. We've got plenty of parking. Having a co-working space where people can come in and work, especially for the citizens, where, you know, small business owners or people that work from home can come into the mall. I guarantee the food court is going to do a lot more business Monday through Friday if we have a co-working space. Very, very little cost to that, and we've got the, we've got the spaces available. So I think it's a great way that it could really benefit the community. I think it falls in line with what the EDC is about, supporting local business owners, and we've got the space to do that. I think we're toward the end here, we can keep going. Financial snapshot, just some of the ways that we can elevate the space. I think the vibe switch with the lighting signage, those type of things are critical. Events funding, those type of things, this is more for the, some of the future, but wanted to present that. We can keep going. Timeline, initially worked toward the vibe switch, put out the PR, get some of these events going, and then start working toward the food court. Really curious about what we could do to bring the movie theater back. Even if they were free movies, I was able to, my business Float, we sponsored bringing a movie back with TPR. It costs $500 to get the rights to present a movie from the 80s. It's very inexpensive to get the rights to some of these movies. What if those were free? And the city is putting these events on, but it's bringing people into the mall. So again, that's part of the experience of a mall. But I think there's a lot of things we could do there. It doesn't have to mean we have to have a full tenant that's going to put five screens up. We can use that space in what it's intended for. I even think we could make it a lawn, we don't have to put chairs in. You know, you bring a blanket, you lay out, and you watch a movie from the 80s. So there's, there's a lot of different ways we can do this. Okay. So really, all I'm asked for today is approval from the EDC to present to the City Council. I think they, it's important to, for them to make the decision, bring this forward, and then we can, we can move into some of the steps about how this would be funded and what we would need to do. Hiring the events coordinator and marketing person would really be the next, next big step after that. I think that's needed already, whether or not this concept is something that we move forward with, and then start setting some target dates and actually outlining what this would look like. And I think that's it. Happy to answer any questions, but also, just so everyone has it, my email address is jeremy@floatsa.com. If anybody in the community has any questions or ideas, happy to discuss it. I wouldn't be heavily involved in this because I'm running four companies, but happy to help any way I can. Anybody have any questions?
Is Orange Julius still?
So I did have to investigate it. Orange Julius was bought out by Dairy Queen about 10 years ago, and Dairy Queen kind of rolled it into their brand and killed it. So technically, you can still get it, but I think there's only a couple left in the country. But yeah, they basically made it part of the DQ Treats, and they ruined it as part of that. So they bought it and then killed it. But you could do a version of that. I think part of this concept is, you do versions of those things where it's not the exact branding, but everybody, it's a wink and a nod, everybody knows what it is. it's a wink and a nod, everybody knows what it is, it could be a little kiosk that's in there that just, like, creates that experience, this is about the experience that we all enjoyed during that time period. And I also think if, if this gets played out at some point, because eighties and nineties won't always be the theme, we change the decade and the, the facility allows for that, at some point, it could be a sixties experience, this mall has been around since, what year was it built, Mayor? Sixty-one. Uh, so there's a lot of different ways that we can do this in the future, but I think for right now, the time period and the things that are, people are interested in, I think this is the opportunity.
Yeah, so, I mean, from my perspective, I think it's, it's a great idea, and certainly something, you know, we could partner with, uh, folks with, obviously, in the mall, they have their marketing folks, it's something we could perhaps in collaboration with them already, you know, use that, uh, as a, as a way to differentiate, I mean, this is, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of weird, if you go in there on a, even on a Tuesday or Wednesday afternoon, there's folks there, like, there's people there, you know, so the idea of a dead mall or any of that is just not accurate at all, and that's something Sid has always said, is like, you know, we have to move away from that, but I, I think to a certain extent, you know, this idea of embracing what it is makes a ton of sense as well, especially if we did it in a very, uh, uh, targeted kind of way.
Yeah, I think if you're very intentional about it, and also the PR, that's why we need a full-time marketing person. The PR behind it of, of not just putting this out in San Antonio, putting out this out statewide, people will drive from Austin for that experience, so if it's, if it's handled properly and put out there in the right way, I think there's a lot of opportunity.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. And, and I'll be, I'll circle back.
I was just gonna say, um, if this was a great presentation, thanks for putting it together, I think some of it's predicated on just maybe what is the yield that we need from the mall overall, and can this be a pathway? But something that's super top of mind for us, there's a lot of one-time event type of pop-up things, and so I think you'd appreciate this, but Google Bingo Loco, it vibes with this, but there's probably just some different models of events that could also be incorporated into this theme.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, just wanted to say, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, just commend you on the time you spent. Um, this is indicative of what we've been talking about, thinking outside the box, and you have, so I commend you for that, because that's what we need. These, how silly or might they be, the ideas, it's a chance to look at it from a different perspective. And if we don't try, we won't get anywhere. And this is a valiant effort, and I really commend you. I really like the movie thing, because you might be able to even turn that into a cultural type Hispanic heritage, Czech heritage, German heritage, just all kinds of venues that would attract different ethnic background, um, people that get to socialize.
Yeah, uh, there's layers of this that I've thought through, but we've got a, we've got a booth store that's at one of the entrances, that entire section could be nineties western. Like, you know, the nineties music culture, uh, country music culture, that's a whole distinct thing, so there can be sections to this, and if you, you bring in just the aesthetic of that and some of these events, there's so many different ways that you can spend it.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, on the grants that are available under culturally based themes, is very conducive and acceptable to most of the grant funds that are out there.
And you have Wunder, those folks, they could apply for any.
Absolutely, we can join together. So what would you like us to do?
Um, yeah, it was mostly just, uh, approval to present to the city council. Um, I could do the same presentation to them so that we're all on the same page, and if they approve it, then the next step would really just be, you know, fleshing out the idea a little bit further. Um, the budgets that I put forth were really just, um, you know, personal experience. Not a lot of research put into that, so we would need to really put together a budget, um, understand what the, the staffing requirements would be, but I think what we're talking about of, like, some of the efficiencies that we're working toward, I think these can be rolled into that. Um, maybe with some current positions or a position that could be, uh, held through the city and the mall, uh, to, to help with events for the city as well, so um, I think there's a lot of opportunity to that, so that's the, that's the main next step, is really seeing if everybody's on board. It doesn't have to be a yes, but I think it's an opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we recognize? I move that we take the next step and present it to the city council, is that what you want it?
Yep, that'd be great.
Present it to the city council for more research? And get the first step started.
Great, thank you, everyone.
I second the motion.
Yeah, and, and, but I did want to recognize, uh, Mr. Weiss, because he did have something to share before we go to the
Sure.
The motion.
First, I'd like to thank Jeremy for his comments. I think he's thinking ahead, and he's got some great ideas. But I would like to correct him on a couple of issues. Number one, for fifteen years, we've had a full-time marketing director. And every, every weekend, we have an activity scheduled. Sometimes brings in a thousand people, sometimes ten thousand, so we're on that effort on a continuing basis, and I'm going to suggest that Jeremy meet with, uh, Victoria Hernandez
Okay.
And send her this slideshow
Okay.
And have a discussion with her. And then one other discussion, which I'd like to clear up, is when we established the little shops, we opened up various small merchants to come in and get their business started. And one was a vinyl record store, and that vinyl record store has been in place for fifteen years.
Oh, I missed that one.
And there's, and there's, and there's one of the most successful small retailers in the, in the property.
Owner's name is Sam. Oh, great, okay.
CD Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Okay, so the motion is?
Is, and second by Mr. Hernandez.
Okay. Uh, and this is just a, a motion to present at city council.
City council for further consideration on taking the next step.
Got it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yay.
All those opposed? Hearing opposition, the motion passes.
Mr. Benioff, when you want it, you can just hit your button and your light will turn on. The one that has that little speaker, right there, turn, put it on and see if your light will come on.
All right, so it looks like we, at this point, uh, we are going into executive session. The EDC hereby, uh, is going into executive session to discuss the reports concerning the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and, and more particularly, the Wonderland of the Americas pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five-five-one point zero-seven-two. And also for the discussion of legal issues related to contracts associated with, and reports concerning the operations of Wonderland of the Americas pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-point zero-seven-one consultation with attorney. So we are going to, it is now, uh, three thirty-nine, and we're going into executive session. It is now five thirteen PM, and the Balcony Heights Economic Development Corporation is now meeting, uh, reconvening in, uh, in open session. Uh, discussion and possible action on items discussed in executive session.
I would like to make a motion to engage P three for phase two, subject to receipt of funding commitment from the city council.
I'll second that motion.
There's a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? In the opinion of the chair, the motion passes. Okay, so we'll move on to item six, announcements, comments, and requests. Executive Director update, not here yet. Future agenda item suggestions. In your future, so, uh, at some point, I would like to, Mayor, uh, bring in the discussion with, we've begun the discussions with the Munich, Munich
Oh, yeah, that would be great.
Munich cap folks, and, uh, just to level set folks around the tours and that whole idea.
Position or from?
No, from here, I think, so that we know how this all is part of the integration of it. Ultimately, how, you know, th- this can assist not just us, but the businesses that surround us that, you know, uh, to help with infrastructure and all of that, I, I, I think, I think it would be a good idea to, uh, you know, work, start, begin, begin, begin socializing that whole idea and that project.
Mr. Chairman, would you be interested in, or in the board possibly holding another meeting before October? Like a special call meeting, so we can get ahead of the game? And like, push time quicker to move? Is there anything, Clay, that we could probably do? If we call another special meeting sooner than the October?
What would be the part to?
Hundred percent, that's what I'm asking.
I mean, you, you, you can move as quickly as you want. I mean, you can have a meeting as quickly as you can post agendas, if you have a, a meaningful agenda and you feel like you can move your agenda forward, then
Okay.
That's certainly fine.
Mr. Chairman, if you could, like, think about that? I mean, I'm just trying to move the needle, needle. Because we lost time, we lost a lot of time, and trying to catch up. So I'm just, a suggestion, recommendation? That, you know, catch up on our lost time and, uh, put
What I'd recommend, Mayor, is that it, that it not happen, uh, any earlier than the twenty-second, which, is that twenty-second, your next council meeting?
Yes, that'll be Monday.
Okay.
No, no, it'll be, I'm sorry, further down the line, yeah.
Yeah, so after that, because at that point, you can put the, we, we can get some feedback from the council as to, you know,
Okay.
Their appetite for moving on with phase two, and, and, and we can also potentially update them with respect to where we are with, with VODA and those discussions as well.
I just feel like we can't stop now. We've got them on the ropes, you know? Okay. All right.
I will concur with what Mr. Clay said.
Okay. I, I, um, just a suggestion. Okay.
Any, any other items for future agendas? Items, any, any announcements from board members or staff?
Jeremy made the front page or second page of our newsletter.
And the express news.
And the express news, with his AI, um. If you guys have any achievements from your respective places, share them with us. We'll put it on our newsletter, so y'all can get exposure for your entity or your organization.
Good, any other announcements, anything else? Well, I just, uh, I'm, at this, I entertain a, a motion to adjourn at this point.
I saw move.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And?
Time?
Time is five twenty seventeen, five seventeen.
Oh, wow, pretty good meeting. Thank you, Clay, for your help.